I think it's time, we ready?
Yeah.
Alrighty. Good afternoon. A call to order, the City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four, the time is two P M. We are located at the Ocean Shores Library. So we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Warren, here. Commissioner Barr.
Yeah.
Commissioner Alalas.
Here.
Commissioner Longgen.
Here.
Commissioner Bees.
Here.
Did I miss anyone? Still have Dan, that's why. Alrighty. Um. Do I, you guys are separated, it's gonna be hard to do.
But we'll figure it out.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? No, Chief Barr, second.
Yeah.
You guys have this down.
We did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, you know us. Alrighty. The task we have to minutes, I couldn't find anything wrong. I actually think we spelled your name right, Mark.
Thank you very much.
But.
I, I would like to make a motion to approve it with two, with two changes. One, at the top, it says, uh, the meeting was ten twenty four twenty twenty three.
Ooh.
Instead of twelve, twelve twenty three.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
And then down in the body, it said that Commissioner Ricker would be the secretary for the meeting today and it's, it's actually me.
Okay. So, do I have a second to approve the minutes as amended?
That's true.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alrighty, it's approved in favor. So, we'll do a two set of public comment before we get started. On public comments, I want to let everybody know that last night, the City Council approved. We updated clearing and grading. And we told my fourth daughter for two years, so my fourth daughter for one year. So it was, it actually went really well, so I'm very happy. And Dan was also, all six of them, so that went well, I'm very happy with that. Um. Second thing is, as you know, and I've formally recognized Dan again, Dan Ricker. His term limited out, if you didn't know, you're allowed to serve two full terms on the planning commission and that is it. Um, he got appointed like with three and a half years on his first term and he did it seven and a half years almost. So that's pretty amazing that he is, that he did that long on it. So, Dan is no longer serving. Uh. So now I open the floor and throw the comments in person.
Regent, I just wanna say welcome to Tom.
Yeah.
And I wanna say congratulations to be a council to who.
Finally, yeah. Made it pretty clear what we're, we're all doing as well.
There you go.
Online comments, Vina.
Hello, thank you for having me, Happy New Year, everybody. No, I, I, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Thank you. Um, what we do, and if you read very closely, but buried somewhere in our handbook. We only have two agenda items by the handbook instruction on our first meeting of any calendar year. First item of business is election of officers. And we included, uh, a little description about the officers in the agenda packet. And the actual titles, and I never get it right, is the chairperson and vice chairperson. Um, the way it works, and I confirmed this with somebody else, is, is we don't, it's basically done. We open for nominations. So anybody can nominate anyone else. Once we have no more nominations for an officer, then I will return the names of the nominated. And we will just do a show of hand vote, and the person with the most votes gets elected. There is no specific if there's a tie, I don't think we've ever had a tie, so that'll be interesting. Um, so we'll go from there. So the first thing we need to do is, do we have a nomination for chair? Of course you do, who do you nominate?
I nominate Gary Pease to be chair of the planning commission.
Before we do, I need to let everybody know that I will be um, on Zoom for the meetings, end of this month, the first two of February, because we'll be out of town. Then there's a meeting in March that I may not be able to be in on Zoom, depending on where I'm at and what it is. So, before we proceed with considering myself or somebody else, I wanted to let you know that. I do have a panel plan, but I should be able to do most of them by Zoom. Do we have anybody else nominated? You have to second? No, you not have to second. Just a nomination and then, um, nobody else nominated. Alrighty, by a show of hands, who is in favor of Gary Pease as a chairperson? Alrighty, so that's one. Alright, so do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Well, I would like to nominate my brothers.
Anything more to say, Mark, before we?
No, I'd, I'd be willing, willing to serve. Thank you very much for the nomination.
Any, any other nomination? When you're not gonna stop nominating?
Yeah.
Alright. Who are all in favor of Mark as the vice? I can vote on this, well, that was so easy, nothing has changed. So I'll work with Mark, but I once tried to chair a meeting by Zoom and that didn't work so well. So when I'm not physically here, I'll let Mark share. Uh, because that's something I'm willing to say. And then I can just speak to you as well, and if we're doing what we're doing and we're going through the code changes, um, I can still do that from afar. So we'll do all of that. Um, the next of the meeting, and this is always like the shortest meeting, remember these, Richard? They were like, twenty minutes long when we did these. Uh, the hand talk really doesn't talk about where our strategic planning session does in general. But really, what we've done in the past, and Richard remembers this, is we kind of go around the room. We ask members what they would like to see us work on in the next year. Uh, and so, really, nothing specific, just throw it out there and sort of what your priorities are and what you really think as a planning commissioner, we should be working on in the next year. So Thorn, we're gonna go by time on commission, so when you're the second longest. So what do you think you'd like to see us work on in the next year?
Well, I just have one question for, what have we submitted to the council or at least completed here? That's been passed by the council that that they haven't taken any action on.
Um, the only thing I'm aware of, and I'll go back through and double check it, is the downtown business district, oh, the downtown park. That, not, once we got clearing and grading done, the only thing I had in my backlog, and I keep a list, is I sent it in. And I have not spoken to, uh, well, doing about it, but, um, I know there is an interest in several members on council. And Tom's mentioned this, and I think you mentioned it too, Paul, is that there's a lot of interest in what can we do to clean up the downtown park. Um, I have a feeling that, and Richard, you can talk about this later, or if you want, is that it's gonna come up during the city council strategic planning as an item, because it's always an item. So what I will do is I will send New Bay or I'll send, I'll remind Sarah that she has that if she can't find it to give to the mayor, so what we did on the downtown park. Which wasn't a lot, we just sort of tweaked it a little bit and talked about cleaning it up and some of the standards.
Did we submit the square footage, uh, changes already, or is that part of the?
We, we actually, let me check that one, I'll check that. Because we did make one change to those. Those are the other ones, and we may change it more as we go through seventy fifty, seventy oh five. But I think that may be the other one. Thank you for reminding me, I'll check.
What am I suggesting, I would have to do something about downtown park.
Okay. We've listed that, um, as one of the challenges in our updating of the code. Do you know if that's in seventy or if that's in a different? Parking.
The code, I don't know.
Do you know if that's in section seventy? Parking requirement, I believe it is.
There's a, um, there's a, a separate, um, off stream parking. And it's not seventeen, I don't think.
Okay.
It is in, it is in seventeen.
Okay. We'll follow that, alright. We'll do that, so, next insigniority, which Carrie, I think, did you?
No, I did.
Yeah.
Terrible. I'm starting to see us work here. So I've got a few things, um, and I'm really happy about clearing and grading, because last year my hot button was Scotch room. And that got written into that, so I feel really good about that, so, yay. So I've got a couple of things, one kind of falls in with the downtown corridor, and that is where we currently have the refuse dump, the glass dump, right? It just, and boy, that's such a great tourist or event area, something we could do with that besides having garbage right there. I mean, it's in a prime area and, and, boy, I would love to find a different place to be able to put the glass and the garbage and things like that, you got the skate park and everything right there. And that's where we put garbage now, and it seems like a great, we could put a armors market, there's a lot of things I think we could do with that, that are more conducive to citizenry and tourism, I think.
I'm gonna follow it, that's good.
Um, another one, which was on my list last year, is to see if we could do something for yard waste for citizens. We want everybody to keep a clean yard, but we got no place to put anything. We've got city sized lots, not enough for him to compost or do anything, so don't know if that's gonna need to be a, 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 a different agreement with LeMay, or whether once a month, we could hold something and hear that the city could do, but I'd really like to see that addressed. Um, and then, uh, another thing I thought about was the, um, and this has to do with fire and safety in light of what happened in Lahaina. And that is to take a look at the code section at seventeen fifty dot one twenty that, that deals with fences and screening. Right, screening vegetation specifically, we've got vegetation that's clearly used for fencing right now, that is clearly taller than six feet. And there are some, it's ambiguous, the code is, to me, is written as ambiguous, it says, well, if it wasn't really planted there for that purpose, then it's okay. But to me, it's still a safety issue. So those are my ideas.
I mean, that's things to look at, and one thing we need to look at is if, I mean, as a group, it's probably a good idea to start pulling some of these ahead of the chapter seventeen regard.
Sure.
And get them in now if we think it's.
Yeah, now it's definitely in seventeen, seventeen fifty dot one twenty.
Yeah, so I mean, some of these, because it could be years before we go through a whole rezone right under the code, but the pieces of it we want to celebrate, and even downtown park, we can do that, those are excellent. Thank you, I guess, Mark, you have the next longest, hold this.
Yeah, I'll, uh, yes, uh, I have three on my list and, um, I think, well, for number one, continue slash finish the rezoning project that we're working on.
Yeah.
Because I really think that's gonna have a huge impact, uh, community wide. And then the other two that I have on my list are safety concerns that we have discussed and kicked around. And that's to complete the connection of Point Brown to the traffic circle here along the golf course. And what really sparked that is the unfortunate occurrence of New Year's Eve out on one oh five.
Yeah.
And so safety is brilliant forefront. And then number three was cross locks on Ocean Shores Boulevard, Pacific Ocean Lake Way, cars.
So. Have you, um, looked at the voting yet?
I asked, asked Sarah, she was gonna go back and, and send the data. I looked on, I can't see because I'm not the administrator. We did extend the voting, uh, till the fifteenth, and Sarah said there's quite a bit, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, she says that the numbers are pretty good, so we'll see how that washes out in the next week or so.
That's awesome. Alright, Larry?
Um, I can win what, where I can carry it, but also, um, I think one thing that I would, I would like to see, and I'm not exactly sure how it falls under, is figuring out or working on items that would encourage more development of the locks that we have, so that we can create more, a year round residential, or not necessarily residential, a year round, um, stays, so to speak. That would support the community, that would support the downtown, that would support, because we got more people coming through in winter time instead of just summer.
Larry, are you, are you, excuse me, are you thinking about the ninety day restriction, extending that?
Nope, not at all, like the opposite.
Oh, okay.
Because, one, I'm not sure anybody, I'd love to see the numbers as far as how many people actually use their ninety days up. And since you have to fill out a form, as I understand it, we could easily pull the numbers to see, well, how many people are actually maxing out their ninety days? Um, no, I'm actually talking about the opposite.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about actually getting the lots that we have, camping lots and other lots, built up so that we have, even, even if it's transient, if it's, uh, part time or full time, but actually having structures on the lots, so that people feel more comfortable coming during the fall and the winter. Uh, because that's the only way we're gonna get enough support for the community, for the actual local businesses. So we don't need anything more for when it comes to summertime for people here.
Okay.
The tourism, of course, I don't mean not to work on tourism, but I mean, when, you know, after Labor Day, all of a sudden, campers aren't coming, you know, maybe for New Year's or something like that. But we need people to actually, even if it is, and I know, I know there's lots of opinions about it, but if we even get more of the transient lodging or of the, not necessarily Airbnb, that's a nasty word, and I don't really mean that. But things where people would be like, yeah, I'd love to come for Thanksgiving, I would love to come for New Year's, I would love to come for Valentine's. Things like that, in places and lots other than just the hotels, because that's already, we already know what we're gonna get with, so.
Okay, thanks. Is that it, Barr?
Oh, sorry, yeah, that was it.
No, we're good, and, and Tom, I need, I know you're brand new, but if you have anything you'd sort of like to see us work on?
Speed control.
Okay.
Because once I get past this end of town here where the twenty five is at, that automatically says thirty five, not too far down the road, and next thing you know, forty five fifty is the common speed limit. And it's Point Brown pretty good, because it's a state highway and it's been maintained for so many years, but go over to Ocean Shore Boulevard and the speed's really pick up. There's gotta be a way to slow, somehow figure out how to slow them down, would it be more, uh, speed traps or cameras or something? To me, a deterrent, and in a small market, once the word gets out that there's the cities operating under those guidelines of fifty people, maybe the speeds are slowed down, Duck Lake drives the same way. The north south corridors.
Oh, oh, for me, anything else?
Uh, just the downtown corridor, or we are starting a new group that's, uh, carvers from Ocean City. In trying to get art, the wood art into the town, to get people in the eye, and more than just coming here for the, the night weather in the summertime, or digging for clams, who wants them to like down in the experiments, got the metal art. And get them to come here, because you got, uh, the wood art.
Yeah, good. Yeah. I actually have to say, I'm going, well, personally, I don't know if I can say, my two really, my two really things are pressing on as hard as we can through the title seventeen, top seventeen remodel. I'm a little really close, I got a couple, I gotta clean some things up this week. And we'll probably get through most of the residential codes in two more meetings, which is good. Um, when we get into the rest of seventeen, I'm gonna start farming that out and asking people to own pieces of it. I know you'll sign up at thirteen oh five, oh. Parts of it. Um, so when we get into, um, like I said, well, mostly seventeen oh five, I'll, I'll take a look at that. And I'll be looking for volunteers to take pieces of that, um, so we can clean that up. But that's gonna be very arduous to, luckily, we've done clarity grading and it got approved.
I heard it.
So, that's all done, um, but there are other things we need to do in there to clean up, so we'll go through that. My second thing is, is to really figure out how to keep the momentum on the walking and biking. Um, and I'm still struggling with that, I'm gonna reach out to other groups to figure out how to do that too. Um, and it's kind of strange. Because in actuality, parks owns a piece of this, because walking and biking are a large part of the Park and Recreation Plan. Um, and so for these to get recognized, any bike, walking and biking projects, they need to be on the master plan for Parks and Recreation, and we did get them in. And Chris is working really hard, and actually she's late submitting her parks and waiting for us to finish and other stuff. Um, but I really figure out a way to keep the momentum going on the walking and biking, and that's on me and Mark, we'll go ahead.
Good question, is the community center following the parks and recs?
No, it says it's all, you know, it's definitely, they, what, it's not private entity, is it considered?
It's a nonprofit.
A nonprofit, I don't want to see it, a complete five one C three.
Yeah.
But it's a completely separate entity.
Yes.
Um, however, we do have somebody who knows that process really well, and Mark, Mark will board it here.
I don't mind thinking with wondering, it's like keeping it up is having a physical mailer with everybody who's part of the community center, because they might be more inclined to be the bikers and lockers.
Yeah.
But I don't, that was why I thought it was.
We have been successful in getting two, um, clips in there, it goes out in the paper.
Oh, okay.
Uh, for no charge, so.
We also could probably talk to Sarah about putting an insert, which isn't a bad idea.
Correct.
So what I think we really need to do is, what my thought was, and I haven't talked to Mark in open set length, is, uh, we will probably have a subcommittee, another public meeting with the subcommittee to kind of go through the results.
Yeah.
And see if some of the people show up again, and then we're gonna learn for people to raise their hands to volunteer to help. On basically champion projects and that sort of stuff. That's kind of where we're going from there, and that's the one we're definitely going to need, um. Well, that's all we'll definitely need, uh, to talk to manager Becky in there, and her help, and the grant party. So we'll, we'll talk about all of getting that done. My third one that's not on there, um, and I will add it, and you can add it, is membrane structures. Um, membrane structures, uh, not tense membrane structures, how do I wanna deal with, um, with membrane structures that meet the international building code and the B one and B two? And this comes not just because of the famous ocean force taproom membrane structure. I actually had a discussion with Dean, Benjamin Loons, um, Dean's excavating right now. And he ran into the same thing out in the B two. Uh, he wanted to put up a membrane structure to store some of his mulching products and found out he couldn't. Because by definition, it's a temporary structure, and what kills the ability for a IBC, uh, a, a membrane structure that meets the IBC is you simply can't do it, because by definition, it's temporary. So there are applications outside the taproom where a membrane structure, a modern membrane structure may be recommended as an acceptable temporary structure in either, in the B one and or B two. With, if it's in the B one, appropriate screening and all that sort of stuff. Because what's stopping it right now is not that the structure doesn't meet code, it's that the zoning code says no temporary structure. So I think we will probably look at that fairly early in the year. And if we wanna look at it again, because when we voted on this, the last remaining member, we said no temporary structures at the time. But what we didn't think about was, um, the impact on some of the other industries. Um, I know, uh, I haven't talked to the manager at Arrow, but I'm pretty certain that if he had an option of putting up an international building code compliant membrane structure versus building a couple more sheds, I know we could go, because generally, they're cheaper. And they are mobile, um, but this did actually come up, because I didn't realize that, although there's new law out there, Dean wanted to to do a membrane and couldn't, so.
I think they did find a mechanism in code to do that, under the temporary structure provisions, um, but there were some fire setbacks that he had to adhere to.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just not for us to look at yet.
Yep.
There's no reason not to, and does it have something to do with the taproom? Absolutely, but is it also applicable in other areas? Absolutely, so I think it's something we can go through again, go ahead.
And as we get closer to summer, it's gonna come up again, I carry. So I think it's something that if we hit, hit it head on.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get in front of it.
Yeah.
For both to react to it.
Because his structure, if you've ever gone over to Westport, they got a couple over there. His structure is, his is commercial grade.
Yeah.
Where theirs over there is just take spikes into the ground there. Yeah, there's no argument, so the argument is, is it wouldn't be our call, we would basically have to say it has to meet the international building code. And there's a code for occupied, there's a code for unoccupied. It'd also have to meet the electoral code, so we'd have to get a state electoral, so whoever does it is gonna have to pass all of, that's not us. Our saying is, are we gonna allow and under what conditions uh, temporary structures in the form of membrane structures that meet the I D soon in the B one, B two? That's all, so that's my third one, so everybody knows. Um. That's, it just came up, it came out of the blue, and, oh, the other thing we had talked about is, is you could do temporary structures as a, um, not a, not permitted use, a provisional use, is what it's called.
Conditional use.
Conditional use, so the other option you can do is you can do them as a conditional use, which would require the community participation, the hearing, and all that sort of stuff. And sort of briefly talking to a few folks about this, one of the things we'll consider is, so that may go on the agenda pretty quickly, uh, we can leave the discussion, I'd have to find again, pieces of code that banned temporary structures, because we had our time finding it last time. Um, and how that could be done, and then go through all that, and perhaps just a conditional use that allows you to apply for the industry, so that's kind of where I'm at. Wow, this may be a record short meeting. Anything else in the way of strategic planning? Before I turn it over for a second set of comments, I know I've inspired some. Anybody else, the things we wanna work on, and I wrote these all down, and I'll go type these up so I can see them all. These are all good stuff, the things I've heard comment is the downtown park. Because you're here, Richard, I'll let you know that, um, if this comes up at your guys' street, your retreat, that we'd like to help participate in this, because we've already written a piece of modified code for that area. Um, and we'll have some volunteers, if you have an analog that wants to look at, that can work with your analog, so that'd be good. Um, good, I think we, I need to, like, Mark, you're doing today, right?
I am.
I totally lost track, oh, you did last one, right?
Take your lesson.
You're up next one. And then we'll go through, we'll start bringing the other newbies in. Alright, so, Carrie is the secretary for the next meeting. And we will do public comment one more time in the room. Go ahead, Shane.
One thing I wanted to check up on, um, and you know, I go to the meetings, Park Board kept bringing up Q, QR codes for the maps and other things. And I told them to get in contact with you guys, because you were looking at these.
I gave her the cloud checkout with Blue Zones.
Okay.
She promised to do that.
Alright, the other thing is, and I don't know if this is in your purview or not, but I heard speed control, of course, in walking and biking, that's been a major thing, speeding's been a major thing. So is things like the speed cushions and something like that, is that something that's in the purview of the planning or outside of it?
It could be, we could put it in that, we would, probably not specific measures, we could recommend measures, but we could definitely bring it up as a recommendation, and it's come up in walking and biking.
Yes.
Repeatedly, um, and so that's really the other way into it.
And, and there seems to be more and more, I'm hearing it from more people, that speed has just, just become a, a problem.
It.
And, and it's public safety, uh, traveling around the city, so.
And, and I think it's, it's the my reply to that, everybody, or really, it's, in the past, there's been, um, an unwillingness mostly due to the feedback of people that don't wanna take, um, one minute longer to get from here to the chair. There's been a lot of pushback to any sort of speed reduction, believe it or not, people that remember that. But a lot of the institutional memory is going away, I think people may be more willing to do that. Um, I did sit down, I haven't talked to the, to Sean Pease, who's not related to me, um, about, uh, some of my experience working with the Portland biking groups. Um, but what they do all over the city of Portland is when they do speed cushions, they do, um, fire and E M T pathways through them, because that's been the biggest thing, so you'll see gaps in them. And they're great for biking too, because you're wide, you know, and you have to go with the pumps. So one of the things they would need to look at is, that's, that's been the other thing is, uh, if we're on the edge of fire response time.
Yes.
To the out of town, so anything we need to do would have to be done with that in mind, get the fire trucks to the jury right now.
Correct, and I, I, I bring it up too, because it's not just a major thoroughfare, whereas now, you know, the dolphin's been in there, canal's another one that's on.
Yeah, we know canals.
You know, um, all that, and so it's not just a major.
Right, and, anything north south.
Even, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, that's the biggest thing is, is I don't know, and it's probably something they need to get a higher safety engineer involved into what works with emergency vehicles. Because we're in a unique situation where we have an unacceptable response times for much of our town, so, alright.
Yeah, um, um, in, in the last week, I've, um, passed over to, um, our mayor, and he passed on to Becky Leach quite a bit of information and research that I've done over two years regarding the emergency vehicles and the proper design, and it's, mentions all of these cities, including Portland, Seattle, um, all over the place, and, and it's becoming very, very common knowledge that this does work. And I also gave them copies of the studies and results and, um, how to, how to go about installing them, whether it's a, a rubber, recycling rubber speed cushion or the asphalt style where it's, you do the proper measurements, and you don't have any, um, problem with the track with, uh, most vehicles.
Yeah.
But it does slow down what you want to slow down.
Yeah.
So, so they're kind of, they're also continuing with that project.
Yes, there is, and that's what, that's what the mayor and I were talking about, he was worried about, so.
Okay.
Anybody else? I did?
Yes, go ahead, so I have a couple. Um, and the first thing I'll start with was one of your last comments about the speed limits. Speed limits north and south, one day coming back from, from town, uh, from Aberdeen. I stopped at the gate, my wife started the stopwatch, and I drove the speed limit, of whatever the speed limit posted. From the front gate, as you come to the, all the way down to the jetty. At the jetty, I restarted the stopwatch and drove all the way back at twenty five miles an hour, the difference in time was three minutes.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and, and my point is, yeah, when I'm going twenty five down Ocean Shore Boulevard at a thirty five mile posted. It feels really slow, but the reality is, it's three minutes, and do I have three minutes to spare to save a kid's life? Yeah, I'm pretty sure I do. So that's one comment, um, runways, uh, I really like that, I really hope you guys bring that forward, Cosmopolis. And our may still have a yard waste program run by the city, I brought the, the city council probably two years ago, before I was on council. My thought was, uh, uh, create a volunteer force to man the gate and chip the dump load. And dump it at the, uh, the public works yard, um, and sort it, uh, those things that can be chipped. Chip, and those things that can be composted, compost, and then sell that back to the community. It would not be a profit center, uh, what the public works director at that time said, that the. The, uh, 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 apology ordinances were just insurmountable, well, I talked to the. City manager at, uh, Cosmopolis, that's just not current, so I, I. Pardon?
Sorry.
So, so I, I really think that, that the city run a yard waste, and it, it, even if it was just a couple of days, a week. Uh, but with the dumper stuff, chip it, compost it, and sell it back. You know, it's not a profit center, but, but it would not be a huge drain either, and it's reasonable to get volunteers. To sort that, because you don't want people throwing things at you, uh, the other thing is, is, oh. I, Jerry can tell you how excited I was about the rewrite I saw on the last. Uh, public works in seventeen fifty, uh, it's something that I worked on very hard when I was on, on the. Um, the city planning, and you guys have done a fabulous job at that, and I am really looking forward to seeing that come to city council. Uh, um, and, and I, I wanted to talk to you guys before I.
Wow.
Goes, went into council and say, you guys should read this, uh, in preparation, because. Uh, the planning commission is bringing it, and you guys, the, the whole thing, small houses, reduce lot sizes. In, in the, you know, higher density zones, all of that, way positive, you get three out of four for that one. Uh, uh, and. I'm gonna be quiet about membrane structures.
And in response to that, I do, and I've talked to the mayor, we need to figure out a good time, is just to do sort of an update. Probably when we get through all the residential zone narratives, to got some, just an informational update. Here's what the planning commission is thinking about bringing to you, we still have work to do, and one, one fifty and in the definitions. And so that's gonna be a long grind, but what we've done on what we look at the, at the definition, we'll, we'll probably probably get it.
And, and I might suggest that, that, uh, scheduling a study session that they're on the front of the city council. Uh, uh, might be really appropriate, because.
Yeah, definitely when we're done.
Yeah, 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 and, and, but my thought, at this point, if, if more city council members read that narrative. I understood it well, because I put so much work into it, but it's pretty clear, uh, what you're trying to do, and, and. That's a positive move for the city, and it will dramatically improve availability of low cost housing. Because it just costs less money to buy a smaller lot and build a smaller house. So that's my comments, thank you.
Before we go, Marshall, anything you want us to work on? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you that.
No, hey, this is, this is your thing, if, if what you're doing, you know, looks like it's gonna cause me some grief, that's where I would have comments.
He'll let you know immediately what happened.
Yeah, exactly.
Go home back, and that's a good thing.
No, uh, no, things, things are moving in a positive way, and, um, I, I look forward to being able to enforce the things that you guys, you guys bring forward to us, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, online, Vida.
Yes, thank you, Gary, I have two comments, one regarding strategic planning. I would like to see the commission work on eliminating pyramid zoning. Working very hard to eliminate pyramid zoning. My second comment, uh, regarding the discussion on temporary structures. I read somewhere in the municipal code, I can't give you the citation off the top of my head. Uh, and this applies to both permanent structures and temporary structures, and that is. Um, somewhere in the code, it says that the finished floor elevation of any building. Needs to be at least one foot above the crown of the adjacent street. Um, so I just would like you to consider that when you're, uh, thinking about.
I, I've seen that too somewhere, I didn't tell you where. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Vida, as always, um, alrighty, anything before we close for the good of the order from this experience? For this meeting, I don't know, alrighty, next meeting is January twenty third, twenty twenty four. Mark will be doing the in-person running, and I will be on Zoom unless something comes out, or the scheme really. Go ahead, Vida.
No, I just, I was waving goodbye.
Alrighty, are the meeting adjourned? Thank you, guys, oh, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I, gosh.
Already a dictator, I just got elected in there.